Yeah.
Yep.
Hi, I'm sweet.
You're sweet, yeah.
That is one minute.
One minute. Right. Okay. Say seven zero zero. Okay, take this and hit it on there.
Nice.
Good job.
Now it's official. Good job.
All right, we'll call the mean to order. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
I second it.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item is the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Is there anybody here from the public like to speak to something that's not on the agenda? Seeing none. Go down to special reports and presentations. Let's do the swearing in of the officer first. That works.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're here tonight because Liam Murphy has now started with our department. He is a Army veteran that when he cycled out of the Army, he went to Johnson County Sheriff's Office, where he's been there for a couple of years. He's been through their academy, so he's a certified law enforcement officer, and he lives here in town with his young family and wanted to start a career policing in the community that he lives in. So he made the transition to us and we're very proud to have him. So if I could, I'd like to call his wife Addison up with the boys if they'd like to come and to put on his badge and then have Amara swear him in if we could.
Addison, take that and you can smack it right there.
Nice catch.
Awesome.
Great.
I think Liam has his parents here and his brother as well. I'll let him introduce them if you guys don't mind.
That would be great.
Absolutely.
This is my mom, Darcy Murphy, and my father standing back over there. That's Brendan Murphy, and my brother Colin right there.
Colin, awesome.
Need you. Welcome to Baldwin. We're excited to have you. It's always a special time to bring on new law enforcement, so.
Thank you.
It's a pretty cool place to work.
Sorry.
We've all been there.
Yeah.
I state your name.
I am Liam Murphy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Kansas.
The Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the city of Baldwin City, Kansas.
Of the city of Baldwin City, Kansas.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of a police officer.
The duties of a police officer.
Of the city of Baldwin City.
Of the city of Baldwin City, Kansas. So help me God.
And if I could add, we wear a soft badge on our carriers, but he also has his official hard badge here that I can give him, so. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Next, if I could have Coach Brocksterman, Shay Griffith, Rachel Watkins, Kami Moore, and Ireland Kennedy come up.
Oh, she wasn't on the, she was just in junior high, so she wasn't part of the team. She's just here as a support, so. But our girls this year were missing one, Ireland, and they set the new school record in the four by eight hundred meter relay at the state meet, and they were only point six seconds off of the state meet record. So they had a really terrific season and were returning all four runners and have some more depth next year to hopefully be able to go after that state meet record next year, so. Yeah, there's our ladies.
Short little proclamation for you. States whereas May thirtieth and thirty first, twenty twenty five, Coach Brocksterman took Shay Griffith, Rachel Watkins, Kami Moore, and Ireland Kennedy to state track, whereas Shay, Rachel, Kami, and Ireland ran a nine thirty point twenty seven minute four by eight hundred meter to become the four A state champs. Now therefore, I, Casey Semenow, Mayor of the city of Baldwin City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, July first, twenty twenty five, to be BHS Girls Track Athletes Four by Eight Hundred Meter Relay Four A State Champions Recognition Day. So congratulations, ladies.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the new brick street project. Is there anybody from the public like to speak to this agenda item? Seeing none. For the council, we included in the packet information. So after our last conversation, I asked Jason Hodgson to reach out to the low bidder just to see what it costs to put some sort of design in that intersection. And that's what is also in your packet, just to kind of take a look at options, because that wasn't included in the original bid. And since we were kind of debating between new and old brick to try to meld that intersection to make it a little bit more special, but didn't tie the council's hands on choosing for future, future blocks that it would still match coming in to that intersection. So Russ or Lynn, if you could kind of give, I know we put out also a survey for the citizens to see what they preferred on new or old brick. What did, what came back out of that?
Okay, so as far as the survey, we had a hundred and forty one responses. Out of that hundred and forty one, we had a hundred and eighteen people reply back that they would like to see the old brick be used. And as far as new brick, we had twenty three, so it came out to almost eighty four percent of people preferred the old brick over the new brick.
So with that, I guess, what would the council like to do? Discussion around this?
Well, I think it's pretty overwhelming.
People spoken.
Yeah.
I would say so.
I think as we talked last time, the only reason we wouldn't do that is if they weren't, if they deemed them unusable.
Right.
Right? Or enough of them. Right. I think we have to wait to see as they get into it. But I think that's what the citizens want to do. I think I support that.
Well, it talks in here about doing new and old.
Yeah, so that's what the design is. So the, I mean, my thought process on it, I know we heard from staff and Julie, based on your committee report, staff kind of wanted to go with the new brick. And I know Rob reached out to me also saying that he would like to see the new brick also. So that's why I kind of wanted to see, see what it would look like if we mixed new and old, so that way as we went through this process and let's say they tore out all the old brick and then we didn't have enough old brick and we're learning that seventy percent of our brick that we're tearing out is unusable. And so anyways, that's why I kind of looked at this and I thought, you know, that would be a perfect intersection. It's kind of the main intersection in our downtown to do something extra special to where we use new and old brick and that could match future streets meeting up with that one in the future. So it didn't tie your hands to that if, based on the information we get from this project, so. I personally would, I mean, I think we have a great opportunity to make, to do something special on that intersection.
Yeah.
I agree.
And like the idea of mixing the old with the new.
Did they do a compare? I think we talked about different sizes concerns and, you know, have they compared them physically? So you wouldn't really be able to mix them. You'd have to do it, if you ran out, you have to have.
It could be a pattern where you do a whole thing new.
I think either the maple leaf would be new or the.
Yeah, I get that part. Yeah, for the intersection, there's going to be enough that I think they have stored or they're going to build. It's the rest of them. I think we have to.
Yeah, and I think as we go to through that, we're going to, that's why I think this is going to be an intriguing project to see how many of those bricks come out.
Right.
That are still usable.
Right.
That's going to be, to me, that's what's going to.
Yeah, if seventy percent of them are unusable, then I don't think there's any reason to think that's not going to be the case. Throughout, then would we have enough? We wouldn't have enough to reuse them. So then are we going to mix them? Are we just going to go with new? So I think.
We have a stockpile of bricks down that we can fill in.
So that's correct. So out of Public Works, we have about five pallets of extra bricks that we could, we could utilize, but that's all, that's all the bricks that we have, which is, is not going to go very far.
Yeah. Half a block maybe or less.
Probably less.
No, and I guess.
Did they ever go through the big hill of bricks?
So yes, they, they went through the big hill of bricks. We had a company come in last year because we, beforehand, we were selling bricks to the general public. So they came in and they went through pretty much everything that we had. There is still a small pile that is left. But there's not a, there's not a lot there that's left. I would say that maybe they might get a pallet or two out of that pile that's still left.
I think we could certainly do the eighth and high intersection with existing bricks. Depending on how many come up unusable, I'm not sure we can commit to use throughout the rest of the fourteen blocks.
I agree.
That would have to be decision made. I think probably as you go to the next block.
Yeah, I agree.
You start with, you start with.
I think this intersection will be very tall.
And then all of a sudden, half a block, you gotta go ahead and do it.
Right.
So I guess we'll learn a lot from this project.
Yep. It says in here that they're different. One's taller than the other.
Yeah, so I think it says in the email, and correct me if I'm wrong, Julie, I don't have in front of me, that they will have to compact it different. If we do the split, they'll have to.
Right.
To make it the same height.
Right, but I'm concerned about the future doing old bricks and then having to do new bricks with it.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. That's why I think this is going to be kind of our test run to see the feasibility of even utilizing old bricks going forward. And it may be that, you know, the, because I know out of the fourteen blocks we've identified, you know, obviously Eighth Street and High Street are the two major ones, and then we have ones off shooting from there. Maybe something where those offshoots can stay old or, you know, vice versa or whatever, depending on how, how everything works, but. But that's why I thought, you know, putting the design in here just doesn't tie us down because anything would still mesh with that and then you still get a, you know, you get the historical flavors still.
Those would be, the design would utilize obviously yellow bricks.
Whatever color that we would choose.
But it would be, it'd be not just a different orientation, it'd actually be a different color.
It'd probably be a new brick, yeah. My understanding from.
That's correct.
Who decided what the emblem?
I think they just pulled a maple leaf.
Oh.
So yeah, this is not set in, this would not be set in stone.
Unintended.
Yeah, 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 not setting, yeah.
Setting brick.
Let me rephrase that now.
We all right there. We all say it.
So.
No, I just asked them to put something like a maple leaf since that's what we're kind of known for. Just to see what the price would be.
Yeah, this is more of a Canadian maple leaf. Doesn't really mesh with our tradition culture. Yeah, I'm sure we'll get to a few design ideas.
Looks like there was a price premium in the, for the design, right?
Yeah.
Was that?
Two oh nine and one ninety three.
Uh, okay. Looking at last week's or last, I think the original salvage brick price, if I'm not mistaken, was like one fifty nine.
Yep.
Correct. The new was twenty K higher, so a hundred and seventy.
Right, so yeah, there'll be, to differentiate between the leaf and the surrounding bricks around it, you'd have to incorporate new bricks, so it makes, I assume there'd be a price increase.
Was it this?
Mm-hmm.
Ninety three.
Right.
One ninety three five, based off the email.
All right, so I'm just trying to figure out, I guess there must be extra effort.
Design.
And our bricks.
And they're different heights, so there's different.
Oh, mixing them, okay. Could use it as a natural speed bump right there in the middle of town.
Used to have a fat there.
Another.
It's just, yeah. All right.
Whatever the council would like to do.
For a motion to accept the, so is that a formal bid they sent in the email?
Yeah, that's an updated price with the.
I mean, before we do the motion, I mean, is, is that price increase worth it? I mean.
It leaves open the, I mean, so my thing is, is, you know, we do this intersection, which I think would be fine in old brick, which is great, and then we have to transition new brick. That's fine. I mean, this intersection remains the old and I'm okay with either one. I mean, I think our citizens have spoken that, you know, they want to see the old brick. So for this intersection, we're going to have old brick, even if we didn't do the design. I think it'd still be fine bringing in the new brick, meeting up with that intersection that just concerns our historical original brick in that intersection if it's not feasible in the future.
I mean, how often do you dig up your brick streets? I mean, I think it'd be a missed opportunity if we didn't do it, if we want to, if people are uncomfortable, or if people are uncomfortable with the, with the bid, I mean, maybe we can ask for a couple of alternatives, see if we can shave some off somewhere, but.
Their original bids were three hundred thousand dollars more than this.
I'm saying we had the intersection bid initially without the design, and then there's the additional cost here with.
I know, even without the design, they were still two hundred and plus, two hundred plus thousand dollars more than this bid.
Right, but the design did make it cheaper.
I know, so why would rebidding it make it?
It would.
I'm asking, I'm saying alternative, maybe.
Back to them.
If, yeah, okay, let's say if we just did new brick in an outline of the leaf, you know, I mean, there might be other places to save. I'm just saying, that's the.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
I'm okay with the design, but that, that price increase kind of is, I mean, that's quite a bit for a maple leaf, but I, I mean, I like the idea of incorporating new and old, so we have ways to go either way, but.
I get it. I see both.
I mean, we, we have so many questions about what the rest of these blocks are going to look like that, I mean, experimenting with this one, I mean, I don't know. If we have to overshoot it a little bit, just to have a better picture of what the rest of it's going to look like, I mean, I can kind of justify it that way. I think the design's cool. You don't get a lot of opportunities to do that. Trying to remember back what we paid for that statue in front of City Hall. I think it was quite a bit more. And this is a lot bigger statement than that, I think.
So why was the, why is the price more than what they gave us before? I mean, I understand the design and everything, but what's the extra twenty thousand for?
I was just putting the design and cutting all the brick into the shape, I think, is the labor.
Different size of the brick, they have to lay it differently, I think, to get this bricks to all level up at the top. I think there's different, different thicknesses of the brick.
I think if we're going to sharpen the pencil, anywhere, we can do it down the road. I think at the center of downtown, maybe is where if you're going to overspend a little bit to kind of be a little flashier, I think there, it's there.
Russ, how much did we have roughly in that account for brick streets?
Roughly a little bit over like two hundred and sixty thousand.
I mean, to Jay's point, I don't know how difficult it would be for Russ to go back to him and say, hey, is there anything, like an outline, two brick outline or anything? First of all, what's driving the increased cost relative to all new?
So, so according to when I talked with Jason, one is it, with the leaf, you're having to cut a lot more instead of, so it's more.
Actual brick cutting.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of actual brick cutting that's going on, and then there's two different heights.
Right.
So that you've got different compaction levels and whatnot, so that's what makes it more labor intensive.
If we did the outline, that's where all the cutting is. So I'm not going to shave much off.
I don't know that it would, actually.
I mean, I guess if we do the whole thing, I mean, it just delays doing another street. I mean, it's not like it takes away from anything else, so.
Right.
Because that money can only be used for the brick streets, so.
I'm wondering if they could do a different design where they wouldn't have to cut so many bricks. Just an idea.
What other design are you thinking?
I don't know. I mean, who, who came up with this design?
Imagine they.
That's a good point.
So the design that is on here was just an example. It's not like the, it's not like the final design. It was just something they could, you know, Photoshop in just to, just to kind of give, you know, just to show us.
Yeah, but then it was twenty thousand dollars more too.
It, yeah, I understand.
But if we approve this and then say we changed the design, once we went back to them, could, would that fluctuate the price though? Or if we
My understanding.
To like to Julie's point.
My understanding is as long as it's the, the maple, like a maple leaf, we would, you know, it would be changed, but the price, my understanding is the price would probably be the price.
Okay.
And it really came back down to it's just more labor intensive. Was, was the main.
I guess, do you guys have any ideas on separate design that you've? I mean, like I said, I, everything in our community is maple leaf, so that's why I said, hey, what would it be for maple leaf? I use that for example, but.
I don't have any other ideas but the design, but since this was all new to me when we came in, you know, could come up with other things. I mean, that was the first time I've seen the design.
And you don't have to act on it tonight. I mean, it's not imperative to act tonight. I mean, we, if we have some timing issues that we'd have to work out because originally we told them it had to be done by maple leaf if we're going to do this, so that way we didn't, didn't mess with that, so.
Correct, and, and you know, and if it's, if it's not approved tonight, I just have to get back with them and, and as well as Jason, and kind of see if they could be able to work it into their schedule before maple leaf, or it might, it might have to be after. But approving it tonight doesn't approve this leaf. It, it doesn't approve the image.
Right.
No. So I think that, I mean, that piece should.
But if, if it's not, I'd like to have some sort of direction for staff, so we're not, you know.
Well, I mean, we could.
On what designs outside of a maple leaf we'd want? If we're going with a design.
I have no idea. I mean, I'm fine with it. I mean, we could spend a month and design contest and we've been through that, you know, it's, and there might be something better out there. I don't know.
I think, I think a more, this looks like a real leaf developed like in the road.
Yeah.
I mean, you could go with like a more of a, oh, like old clip art, like, you know, where it's more rigid, but more defined, and that'd be easier to repair too, because this is a lot of little, if you got to repair a section here, I mean, you're going to be going back and cobbling in. Hell, it's, it's going to look like who knows what after twenty years. You know, if you can just do something that's more, more linear.
Right.
How's that for direction? Good?
I get what you're saying, because I had the same thought when I looked at it. I was like, that's a lot of lines, but you said it's just an example.
Then they're going to have to cut all the old brick to fit the new shapes in, so how many of those are going to withstand cutting too, so.
What can we leave it in?
Not approve it. I mean, whatever the council wants to do.
I mean, I don't, I don't think that we should just go with the first design slapped in front of us. It's going to be in the middle of our downtown for a hundred years. I think we should probably give it some pretty good consideration and kick it to a committee or something and just have it on hold until we come up with a design and we can do it sooner than later, but I'd like some kind of feedback, and this is a huge logo in the middle of town in stone.
Then what's some ideas? Because we can put out another survey with this and with a couple of other ideas.
We should do, yeah.
And bring them back, but what other ideas? Well, we can come up with just, I don't know.
It could just be an open survey for people to submit ideas in the community.
What? I think, yeah, I mean, I think that pretty much kills the maple, before maple leaf. That's, and that's, that's fine. I mean, we just have to set expectations, right? This is be a post. Can they even do it in the fall or?
And, and here's the thing is that when we originally sent out the bid, it was to be completed by before, like two weeks before maple leaf, so it kind of depends on where they're located with their equipment. So I don't know if.
Because that bid's not good forever.
The bid's not good forever, so.
Might change it based on their schedule.
That could.
Yeah, they probably wouldn't want to be doing it in the middle of winter.
Or if they got another. Yeah, if they got another projects lined up behind this one, then would have to, you know, get in the back of the line and that could be next year.
Could we approve it tonight, but they'll change the logo if we know it's not going to change the price either way. And then that way we're already go.
Moving.
We're moving in the right direction. They know when they're coming, but no logo is set in stone, so we can do the survey or come up with ideas or so everyone's comfortable with what we want to do.
I mean, we could, we could get a.
I mean, we could, we could get a couple different, uh, options, um, you know, from the, from the contractor or, or Jason. And then bring it back to council at that point and, you know, we can narrow it down by the survey. I, I just don't know what their ti, I don't know what their timing is. On, I know that my understanding was is they're working on a project up in Kansas City. And they're out of like the Wichita area and I don't know if they were. As they're moving their equipment, they were going to stop here and do this project before they went on to another one. I, I'm just not, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that.
I think the public should have a say in what this leaf looks like.
Yeah.
And we've kind of used some of that stuff for smoke on the bricks and stuff like that, and it's looked really good, but yeah. Yeah, yeah. Because the only other design I could think of besides maple leaf would just be putting a B in there. I mean, I'm not very creative, so. But a B, a B would be the only other thing that even pops into my head. But.
I know we've talked about the maple leaf before, and so I know this isn't just a new thing that's being sprung on us. We've, we've discussed the maple leaf design. And honestly, I can't think of anything else that would be more fitting. I'm just worried and just to clarify, if we do approve this, I mean, we're going to see an actual design, not just.
Correct.
Before they move forward.
You can even make a motion contingent upon the council's final approval of a design.
Julie, would you like to see this go out so people can? Bring in ideas or do we, you, would you be more comfortable with us giving ideas and then having them vote or what?
Well, I'll tell you what, um, I'm kind of making a line in the sand because I don't like to have to. Vote on something that I didn't know about. So. I. Kind of been against it, I guess.
As I said, you don't have, we don't have to vote tonight. I mean. This was just another idea based on the council's discussions last time to see where we could come to the middle to try to, you know. Just in case we had to move to new bricks so that everything melted together.
Yeah, but I didn't know we were going to do it. Any kind of a design.
I just asked the question and this is what came back, if they can, if it was even possible.
Well, maybe we should have talked about it before you did that.
To ask a question?
Well, no, but to talk about whether we want to design in the middle or not.
And that's what we're doing tonight.
Okay, then I don't think we should vote on it.
Perfectly fine.
So. I think we were all on board with moving forward with this contractor based on the bids, is that fair statement? And we weren't, we didn't know whether we want to go old or new. I think we're citizens want to go old bricks, so I don't know if there's, so is, does it make sense? I mean, we're gonna do it with this company, whether there's a design in it or not, right? So. I mean, it's almost like we approve the previous bid. And it would be open to a different bid pending a design that. Everybody wants to do if the price is right, right? So they can keep us on the schedule. That they planned on and they're going to come and do it, whether there's a design in it or not, um, using the old bricks. I mean, does that keep us? I'm just afraid if it, we miss it, then it goes back out to rebid and they might be up in the three hundred thousand dollars like the others were. Cause they gotta come all the way back from Wichita. So I think part of it is the timing of where they're at and I think we need to take advantage of that. I don't want to lose that going through this, um. Process about whether we do something else.
And it's something too that you could approve the.
Previous bid.
Previous bid. And we could still go out to the public with different designs and with the price on there. And let them give us feedback on either what design they want, if they're willing, if they want to see us spend that extra money for that design. You know, all that fun stuff. So you have to work pretty quick.
The only thing is you'd probably need to ask them about, you know, how soon they would need to know if there's a design involved and that would be our deadline. But I'd just like to keep our slot.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
Well, I'm good with approving. The previous bid.
So would that be the motion then, or does the motion need to be contingent on a design?
No, I, I think whether, I, I, I think we make the motion then, um. Then we come back to the next. And ask them, you know, if we can, you know, if we can show them a design and they kind of rebid it, they kind of already have based on this. But there basically be a second bid where we could accept or reject, right? Independent of, of this, so.
I think this motion is for whether we go with new or old.
Right, correct, that's how.
Yeah, since the people voted for old, then I think.
Right.
That is what the motion should be. As, uh, the previous bid was given.
Russ, you think that would work?
Yeah, I mean, I can, I'll reach out to, uh, Jason and, uh.
They got back to us, and like I said, it was right after the council meeting roughly that we reached out to Jason to see if it was even feasible to mix old and new. Together, so the council had.
We asked him at the council meeting, didn't we? We, we talked to them about the leaf design, yeah. So.
I think you brought, somebody brought up tonight, I think it's a great point, maybe ask them about repair on something like that with those fine cuts, I mean. One, is it where worse? Cause it is a smaller piece and then how in the world would we repair that?
Yeah.
I'm guessing repairs wouldn't be cheap.
Well, I think the less angles you have.
Right. Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
So then would the council like us to, like staff to put together, use this, I guess, sample that they provided and then. Put some together with like a B in it and put it out and then ask for suggestions along with that to the community? I mean, what?
I don't like that leaf. I, I don't want that leaf. That's going to be a construction nightmare as city worker repair nightmare. I think that's too many angles. I think you have to go with something more linear and simple for just repair purposes. I don't think, I, you can put that leaf out there in the poll with other ideas, but I think you need to give people four or five other ideas to look at. I'm just gonna tell you straight what I think about that leaf.
Then we're letting.
I like the leaf.
Unity come up with the idea for we doing it.
We're gonna have this, we're gonna have a short window here. Yeah, that's what I'm afraid of, yeah.
How long was the other survey open for?
Since the last meeting, two weeks.
Yesterday.
Two weeks and we got a hundred, so. We can do. Or do you think?
Well, are you gonna offer up, vote on these or are you gonna offer, just leave it wide open, say make some?
That's what I mean, we could do a week to submit ideas and then a week to vote on maybe what the community wants.
I think that'll be tough to get.
Ah, yeah, yeah, okay.
To get a turnaround. I mean, for asking for ideas, uh, you know, and then to do the design, get it out and survey. I think we're.
Yeah. I, I like a maple leaf, it kind of, but I just, to Corey's point, is there one less intricate than that? It still looks good.
Might end up looking like a rock, which is a different type of leaf.
Like a stick leaf. That's what I'm saying, you don't want to mess this up.
So Jason is actually watching this at home and he actually just texted me, so. Playing on my phone. The folks at home are thinking, so, um. Basically, he's saying that, uh, you know, if, we, we probably need to accept the original bid, um, you know, um. And then put it in there about the logo could be a possibility. Um, he said otherwise. Um, I'm sure, you know, we could, we could have seen a hundred and fifty thousand dollar higher if, if we go out to rebid. Because of, um, them having to come back, so. You know, and there's also, once the contract gets signed, uh, he's also telling me that, uh. They need at least a month to get for the contracts and the bonds and all that stuff to get fully in place. Uh, before they would even start, so.
And we wouldn't want them to start till after August ninth anyways, because we got smoke on the bricks.
Correct. So. I mean, potentially if we bring it back to next council meeting, then just say the rest of that month and August, then it would have to be September timeframe.
But if we approve it tonight based off the old original bid.
Correct, with the option to, um, add the logo on.
Per their email.
Yeah.
And if he's watching, when would that deadline be? We'll just wait for your texts.
Yeah.
I think that's all we can do tonight.
Yeah.
You know, and if they're, if they bid that. Intricate leaf at that price, I mean, we're, we're thinking about something mu- much less intricate, so I don't see it. Being more than that.
You can have.
I wouldn't see it being more than that.
Right, right.
They may not.
Have you at least, you know, two sets of the leaf, you know, going in the same direction as the bricks. I mean, there's no cuts there.
Yeah, I was kind of thinking our city logo is what, when I.
That's a very simple maple leaf, yeah. That would be something that I would think would come in cheaper.
Well, either way, I think we're. So. Okay, we'll, I guess, do. Some designs, put them out for surveys, bring that back to the council and go from there. Is that what you guys want us to do on the city staff side?
Yeah, because you're waiting for a design from me, it's not gonna happen. I mean, like Jay, it'd be like a B, a block B.
Be a block B.
Yeah, that's fine. I think that's, we, we, we need to get them moving.
So here's, I'd suggest doing it if you're doing it in survey based is at least get, you know how you, when you do like, uh, an open AI request. They ask you if you want a traditional, a modern, a classic, and I would kind of find a genre of a leaf. And then narrow it down that way and then we could be open to ideas and all that and, and maybe pick a final three. Right, right.
Yeah, I mean, what?
Yeah.
I think we should use that one as.
Looking them up on, while you guys were discussing, and there's one that looks kind of like that, that would, has way more straight lines.
Cause that's, I think that, I mean, that matches everything we have already. So we can use that one as one of them.
Yeah, I think just give the public some.
This one is one of them. Do you want to be, Jay?
No, if we're all in favor, I'm just saying. That's as far as my creativity is.
With you, yeah.
So. That's all I'm saying. If, if we're all in favor of wanting some sort of leaf, I'm fine with that. I just, if we needed other suggestions, I don't have any.
Lynn, do you just want to come up with three different designs then? You know, we'll get it, put out on a survey and bring it back next time. I think personally, and council let me know what you think, if we use this one, we did the city logo one. And then one other one, is that what you guys were kind of thinking?
I don't know, I think we're all pretty worried about this.
Yeah, I don't.
I don't think we use that, I mean. I think that one plus two more options and not this one, but that's. I agree with that.
Okay, what does the maple leaf committee use for their leaf? I feel like that's a. Pretty simple one. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. We have to be careful about, I guess, someone has rights to it.
Yeah, it kind of looks like that one. They got a bunch of different ones.
Yeah.
Then it goes. Wasn't just the people.
Yeah, I think you want to, I think you want to err more toward a logo than a image of a real leaf. I think you want it to be something that can be more of a symbol. If it's going in rock.
We will try to get that put together and get out. Get out to the public. So do I have enough?
I'll throw one more, just stipulation out.
Of course.
Quick, real quick. Well, here's the thing, all right, I, I remember back to the statue of Maple Leaf days and I remember all the people that were upset about it. And it's kind of grown on me, but, um, I think one of the options should be, instead of just there being three or four options, definitely have a fifth one on there. It says none of these, that way, just in case there is a resounding hatred for it, we can know it. That's it. And then I'll make the motion. Uh, I move to approve option, is it two, using the new and old?
They'd be just old right now.
Just be old.
Okay, okay, so well, but, okay, the logo's shelved, so, okay, I move to approve, uh, the. Old bricks for the Brick Street project at the intersection of Eighth and High Street.
Bid and the amount of, what was the bid amount of?
The original one.
Hundred and fifty nine?
Yeah, do we need to waive the engineering estimate?
Or not?
Yes.
Right.
You need to incorporate all that in your, so we need the amount in your motion and.
Well, the amount was on the, uh, old packet. I don't think we had to have it up. Thank you. Do you want to make the motion then?
There you go.
He got out of that one.
There you go.
Let's let you handle this one, Jay.
Oh, great.
Or send my motion.
Yeah, so the motion was, it was for a hundred and fifty eight thousand, so.
Even?
A hundred eight, a hundred and fifty eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety six dollars.
You want to, what's this company's name now?
Art Stone.
Oh, that was who they were using for their sub, that's right.
Art Stone. We need a motion to approve the bid for a hundred and fifty eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety six dollars to Hartstone. For the Eighth and High Brick Street Intersection Replacement Project.
Waive the engineering's estimate, engineering estimate.
With waiving the engineering estimate.
I move to approve the bid for a hundred and fifty eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety six to Hartstone. For the Brick Street project, the intersection of Eighth and High Streets.
And waving.
And waiving the engineering estimate.
Been moved.
With the option.
With, with the option to, um, add the additional cost for the design.
Been moved, third second?
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next, ordinance one, five, one, two, rezone of a hundred, one, zero, one, Eighth Street, Russ.
So this was heard at Planning Commission on June tenth, um, this is ordinance fifteen, twelve. The address for the property is one oh one, Eighth Street, uh, currently the property is zoned commercial. The owners are asking for it to be rezoned to residential. It's been a residential structure for over a hundred and twenty. It's been a residential structure for over a hundred and twenty years. They're having issues with selling the house because the underwriters for the different banks will not write a loan on it with it being a commercial zoning. So they're having issues with trying to sell it. This was approved at Planning Commission with a unanimous vote, three to three oh. And city staff is in in recommendation of approval. The only reason why this is zoned commercial is is because, one, it was on Fifty Six Highway. And two, when we did the zoning overlay back in the early, early two thousands, that's when we identified that. Now, back then, zoning didn't affect loans and underwriting and all that that process. The current people that owned it, they bought it in two thousand eleven and they had no issues obtaining the loan. But there's been a lot of stuff that has changed over the years through legislation, and so that's why they're requesting this.
So Russ, didn't we have an ordinance that said that if you sold your property, that it would be turned into commercial? So do we, are we going to need to change that if we still have that on file?
Um, I I am not, I'm not for sure on that one.
Okay, because I I thought, I'm not sure when, but they said if you lived on Fifty Six and it was a residential and you sold it, it would be a commercial.
I would assume that would have been what, when the overlay happened, they would have had to adopt that by ordinance because that's the only way to rezone property that
Yeah, so I don't know if that's file or not, so.
Probably is, I would assume, but um, yeah. But that's why they have to request to change it back.
Yeah, oh, I understand.
Anybody from public like to speak to this agenda item? Seen none, council discussion? Not on entertaining motion.
I move to approve ordinance fifteen, twelve, as presented. I second it.
Been moved in second, Julie?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Corey?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Motion passes five oh. Next KMEA appointment, um, so we need to appoint somebody to represent the city on the KMEA. Looking for the council and I would I would just recommend Russ to take that position.
Is that a one year or is it long?
Yeah, it's to fulfill the current term.
So this would, this would be to fill the the current term of Glenn's, uh, because Jay is already on there as well as Jeff. My wingers are alternate, um, this would be just to refill his position.
Anybody from public like to speak to this agenda item? Seen none, council discussion?
I think it's a great idea.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move to appoint Russ Harding to the KMEA Board of Directors.
Second.
Then moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next agenda item, same thing, KMGA appointment.
So so on this one, um, you know, currently we have, you know, Glenn is listed as well as our alternate is Rob Cooley.
Anybody from public like to speak to this agenda item? Seen none, council discussion? I would recommend Russ again to fulfill this current term.
I move to appoint Russ Harding to the KMGA Board of Directors.
Been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next, final one is the treasurer appointment. Um, this was also vacated. So our ordinance states that we have to have a city treasurer. Glenn served in that role. Um, I believe our ordinance also states that unless the council approves, the council has to approve somebody outside of our city limits, appointed that position. Correct.
They they can approve somebody that lives outside of the city limits or inside the city limits. And that's according to our charter ordinance, um, number twenty eight.
Has that always been assumed by the city administrator, or is that something that maybe used to traditionally be its own?
So at at times when we had a true city treasurer that was on staff, um, usually that person would operate underneath that. But now that we contract with Baker Tilly, um, Glenn has filled that role from there.
Right. So now it's just, uh, I mean, last, when I became mayor, um, our city accountant was the city treasurer.
Is it a paid position?
Okay. So instead of the city administrator signing the checks? Interesting. I don't know, kind of interesting. I mean, I think for continuity right now, appointing Russ would be the simplest
Yeah.
Things.
So is this an appointment?
It is. It's appointed appointed by the mayor and approved by the council. Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't know.
Recommend Russ again.
I move to appoint Russ Harding as the treasurer for the city of Baltimore City.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, the next agenda item, council hiring committee. So I put this on the agenda to just have a discussion with the council. The city administrator is appointed and removed by the city council, so I want to make sure that the city council is front and center for this uh process. Um, and my idea was to appoint two council members to work with city staff in the coming days, week to ten days to get the job posted for the city. And then, once we, once the council can work through that, then we start appointing council members for each step of the hiring process so that you can all be involved in that. But right now, I think we just need to get the process moving, so um I was thinking we could form a little committee, get two council members to start working with city staff to get this out and posted with AMRA, so we can start getting this advertised thoughts on that. I guess my recommendation too for time and getting it done would be Scott and Julie to serve on this committee to get this process rolling. But I don't know what they each think about that.
I'm okay with that, I just, is there, do we not hire an outside firm to do a search?
That's part of this committee, I was going to let you guys kind of
Figure that out, I didn't know if there was a process.
Yeah, I was going to let you guys discuss with uh staff to figure out what the best process would be to get this, whether it's a firm, if we need to go out for RFPs for a firm. If we want to try uh just with the league municipalities, working with them to see what they can offer and all that fun stuff. But I was kind of want the council to be on the driver's seat, since this is your guys' appointment. Thoughts? Nothing.
Does anybody else want to be on?
Yeah, does anybody else want to be on it?
Not that I don't want to be on it, but my week is about ready to be very, very busy with the concert coming up. So I would not be available until probably Tuesday, so that's probably too late. So that would be my only reason.
Definitely think it needs to get in the process pretty quick.
And I wouldn't want to hold it up, so that would be, that would be my reasoning.
With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mister, I don't have any time.
I motion to appoint Scott Lordson and Julie Consonescu to the committee to
Hiring committee.
Hiring committee for the new city administrator.
Moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Council Committee reports budget and finance, Scott.
I know we did meet, but it was focused entirely on the budget workshop that we all went through, so uh everybody understands what came out of that. And then, you know, we did continue to talk about the electric rate options that we want to try to get in front of the council. At the next meeting, I think is the goal. For a decision before, probably in the first meeting in August, I think, we'd have to make it to to make it effective July rate. So um, we talked a little bit about that, um, but the rest was a budget workshop agenda and content. Did I miss anything, guys?
No, I don't think so.
Next meeting, we're going to take Friday off since it is a holiday. We'll be on the would make that for be the eighteenth.
So you won't bring it back to the next council meeting.
Yes.
Probably need to have a meeting
Oh. Okay, so when is that first meeting in August? And bills go out on the eighth? The tenth.
August fifth is the first meeting.
And our meeting's on the fifth.
And then this month.
We'd have to publish it after the meeting. Okay, and there's a, is there a timeline that has to, that you have to be before you're in? Okay. Okay. Yeah. We can try, I mean, we just have to meet, we have to meet um on the eleventh, yeah. So we'll plan on meeting uh July eleventh as our next meeting, seven thirty AM, second floor, City Hall.
Community development, Corey.
Yeah, we met um, oh, a couple of weeks ago, um, and we had a couple of gen items. Um, the first one was the pole banners, we had the um chamber, Main Street, lumberyard, all uh show up and uh share some of the uh designs they created through a couple of local artists, pretty impressive stuff. Um, I think everyone's going to be really happy with them.
Question on that, will that be brought to council for final approval? I think that's
I think that's how it goes, yeah.
So.
But wouldn't it have been? No, I think there's, I think we still have that till the next council meeting. I think they were still finalizing a couple of things, so, yeah. Yeah, that was just kind of a presentation type deal. But they're they're really great, I think people are going to like them. And then we had the uh rolling agenda item that looks like it'll be on there for the foreseeable future with the food truck ordinance. Several businesses showed up, uh, kind of gave some feedback, um, and we got um sort of some of that guidance over to Shay, city attorney, so she can kind of come up with a mock ordinance for us to all come back and review for next time. So I know she's out of the country, so um I'm sure she'll get to that as soon as she's back. And by next uh meeting on July twenty first, four o'clock, second floor, City Hall, we'll have some direction on that.
I'll be safety, Susan.
We have not met since the last meeting, um, we're scheduled to meet next on July eighth at four o'clock.
I would quirk, Julie.
We have not met since the last meeting and our next meeting is July tenth at nine o'clock.
Strategic planning slash hiring.
Yeah. We just got drafted into a new role, so there are no planning.
Well, our committee's not doing anything.
There's no more strategic planning than selecting your next.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, we don't have a another meeting on the calendar at this time.
Staff comments, anything? Any further council comments? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes, we are adjourned.